Easy to bring this crowd to order. Thank you, everyone. Happy Thanksgiving Month. Today is November 13th, 2017. This is the Dearborn Board of Education meeting. Trustee Secretary Petlicoff, will you please read the roll call?
Trustee Barry.
Here.
Trustee Hamud.
Here.
Trustee Nassar.
Here.
Trustee Mead.
Here.
Trustee Petlicoff here.
Trustee Thorpe.
Here.
President Lane.
Here. So, I'm sorry that we're a few minutes late. We've actually been meeting here. All of the board has been here since most of us-
Five o'clock.
Since 4:59, actually. We started the first meeting. And there's been a series of committee meetings on different topics. So, I'm apologizing for being five minutes late, or eight, maybe, whatever it is. But, thank you, everyone. And we'll proceed now. We have a full agenda.
Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag. Ms. Amy Modica, Principal of McDonald Elementary School, will introduce students who will lead the pledge of allegiance.
I would like to introduce Isaac, Sarah, and Isa. They are first graders at McDonald Elementary. We're excited to be here to say the pledge of allegiance. And they're going to start.
Hi.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where its stand one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, you guys, wow. Wow. That makes you feel great. Well, I know who's Sarah. She's right here. Sarah, thank you for coming tonight. You did a great job. Thank you very much. Isaak, you're in the back there. So, this must be Isa. Thank you, Isa. Thanks for coming tonight, Isaak. Thank you. You did a great job.
Good job.
Principal Modica.
Hi. I just thought I would take this moment to tell you a couple of the great things that are happening at McDonald's School this year. The first thing we have that is brand-new to us this year is Playworks. Playworks is a system put into schools where we try to teach students how to be leaders and take responsibility for what is going out on the playground and what is going on in schools. We got a grant through Playworks where we have a coach come in one week out of every month. And she actually works with our fourth and fifth graders to be junior coaches so they become leaders on the playground and talk about what's appropriate play and how do we solve our problems. And it is going wonderful. Our kids are learning how to play four-square and switch and a whole bunch of other games they have never played before. They're learning how to solve problems by using rock, paper, scissors, which is then going into the classroom and it's saving academic time. And our fourth and fifth graders are becoming outstanding leaders on problem-solving and leading games and leading things within the school, too, that are academics. So, that's one of the amazing things that's happening at McDonald this year. One other thing is we got invited to the Pistons game for a halftime on March 9th, and we're going to send out an invitation for everybody, for our magical choir and our maid, which is McDonald Arabic Drumming Ensemble, to perform at the halftime show on March 9th.
Wow.
Awesome.
Thank you.
That's wonderful.
Superintendent's updates, agenda items?
Good evening, everyone. So, I just wanted to mention that later in the agenda, we are going to be having a discussion item on the boundary in high school capacity. It's just really going to be an update as to the community forums and where we're at thus far. As everyone's aware, this has been on the board agenda. We've been discussing this in every meeting since May. So, I just wanted to mention that for all the public. Also, I wanted to mention, we have a motion for a opposition to House Bill 574, which would take the enhancement millage. And it would be on a renewal. So, my understanding is it wouldn't impact the current funding for the next five and a half, six years. But that any renewals anywhere in the state would mean that money would go to the charter along with public schools. And just a reminder, too, we do have a lot of, you know, charters that are for-profit. So, that would cost Dearborn on any renewal $1.9 million approximately, Dearborn Schools. So, the entire county would lose out. And again, Wayne County's the only one who's passed this millage. So, the legislation was initially, the motivation was set up because of the millage that got passed last year.
Before you go on, I don't know if anybody wants to comment on that. I personally would like to comment on it because when the millage passed, it was the public schools that, of course, advocated for it. And we explained our need. Now, I know that charters are supposedly public schools, but they are not truly public schools. Many of them are profit-making institutions. And they don't play by the same rules. They don't have the same costs as we do. They don't have transportation. They don't have retirement. Their teachers' contracts are completely different. So, they're not truly the traditional public school that you know. So, it's not what people, when our millages were passed and when our state constitution is looked at as regards education, it's not what we've always thought of as traditional schools. These are profit-making schools. Why they should share, many of them, why they should share in state dollars is beyond me. And that will depend on what people here in our audience, broader in our educational community, what you do. I mean, the Michigan Legislature is changing the face of education in this state. And I believe Superintendent Maliko is going to discuss next possibly the Senate Bill 584, 586, which is going, it would allow guns in schools, daycares, churches, bars, sports arenas. So, I'm completely opposed to it. I think emotion and weapons don't mix. So-
... across state government. So, it's an important, these are important issues. We need your voices as well. And you'd be surprised that your voice does matter. Trustee Petlicoff?
In regards to the funding and the enhancement millage being transferred over in part to the charter schools, another thing that people have to understand is charter schools also traditionally don't have high schools. Or if they have high schools, they're very small, very limited in scope, high schools that use a lot of dual enrollment and other resources, not like what public school systems provide. They also very rarely have anything to do with special education resources. There are so many ways that they are not at the same level of resource management that the public school systems are. We take everyone at every capacity level and we find ways to educate them in a variety of ways that the charter schools are very limited in. So, when people vote on, voted on that millage, I don't think they looked at it as a vote to go towards the charter system, which, as Trustee Lane mentioned, is, many of them are run by for-profit businesses. The properties are owned by the corporations that run them. There's no oversight like the public school system has. The community doesn't get a say in how those charter schools operate. They have very little transparency involved with them. Only the people who are the insiders, pocketing the money from those students, really understand what's going on. So, when you vote for a millage in the hopes that you understand where your taxpayer dollars is going, you really don't get that sense of understanding when it goes into a charter school system. So, I think that people would be hesitant to support a millage going forward if they weren't sure that they had the same kind of oversight of those tax dollars when it came into the, and Wayne County has a huge number of charter schools that would benefit from that, which is why they probably looked at it as an opportunity to try to get some of the funds.
And they don't have a board in which to hold accountable. Their boards are not voted on by the people and so on. So, that's another distinctive factor that the public school has that charter schools don't have. Trustee Thorpe?
It doesn't take long to reach out to your state representatives. I did it over this weekend to make sure they knew how I felt about these bills. And I've done the same thing both with House Bill 5, excuse me, Senate Bill 574 and then Senate Bill 584 to 586 that President Lane mentioned with the weapons. You know, with all the things that we're dealing with in schools and teachers and all the things and the standards, I mean, that would just be one other thing we'd have to worry about, you know, safety for our students. And so, I did put some information out on my private Twitter account and, you know, sent that out there. I have spoken, I've communicated with all of our legislatures that have a piece of Dearborn, and they're opposed to both bills. In fact, we spoke at the Lori, at the Veterans Day, with Representative Hamud. So, they're all with us and they're opposing these bills. But there's a chance, I'm hearing that there is a chance that the 574 at least could pass. I'm not sure about the other one. So, people need to reach out and, you know, state their opinions.
Well, the governor would have to sign it into law also. So, even if our representatives can't affect it much, you can still call the governor's office and you can make your concerns known. And we need people to do that.
It is fact that the governor has indicated that he would veto.
I haven't heard that. When I called-
He vetoed it the last time.
He did last time, yes.
So, there's a hope there that we can encourage him to do the same again.
Right.
So, retirements on the agenda for tonight. We want to congratulate and thank them for the service over the years. We have Robin Armstrong with over 20 years of service, James Flannery with over 19 years of service, Dolores Malazuski with over 10 years of service. We also have Thomas McCory with 10 years of service, Mary Raftery with over 20 years of service, and Annie Siddiqui with over 14 years of service. So, again, congratulations to our retirees and we want to thank them for their service to the district. And I do send a personal card to all of our retirees. I have been doing that. So, that's all for agenda.
Non-agenda items?
So, non-agenda, I just want to, you know, over the weekend, it was Veterans Day. So, I just want to, you know, first of all, the veterans, you know, of our military services really have put their lives on the line to, you know, protect the freedoms that we enjoy. They've dedicated their lives to their country and deserve to be recognized for their commitment. We need to remember their achievements, their courage and their dedication and to say thank you for their sacrifices. And so, I just want to today, on behalf of the board, thank all of our veterans. And I know many of us were at the ceremony at Lori on Friday. So, if we can just, you know, thank them. And we appreciate all that they've done to support not only Dearborn but the United States. I also want to mention, you know, one of the things that I've prided myself on and my favorite thing is in interaction with students. And I'm now entering my 23rd year in the school district, worked at multiple levels, 419 school visits last year, the year before, 396. Today, I met up with students and it's really rewarding. When I was a fifth grade teacher back in the late 90s at Salina, and I'm at the City Beautiful Breakfast, and it's now happened two years in a row where a former student of mine had her daughter, who's now one of the junior commissioners, and came up and got a picture. It shows that I'm getting a little older, but it also is very rewarding to see successful people in the community. That's one of my favorite things, when I see our former students successful, you know, they've graduated over the years and again. So, this is, so today, I was at Maples. And again, my favorite thing, interacting, we were there for a school improvement visit. And Yasmin, a student in Ms. Wolfski's class, she gave me this, which says, "Dr. Maliko, she made it for me." She was waiting for me to come to school. I didn't know. But basically, she saw me at Edsel and she had to get in one of those selfies that I know some of you really appreciate, Trustee Thorpe and Trustee Petlicoff and others, President Lane. And so, I just wanted to thank her. And I do plan to visit and send a card. And I just very appreciate it. So, it was a real special gift that I received today. And it just happened that I was assigned to her class. So, just wanted to mention that. I want to thank all the students because we really do have a great group of students, almost 21,000. And that is, you know, one of the best parts of this, the job that I have is interacting and guiding and leading the students. So, just wanted to mention that and thank them.
Okay, next.
Okay, recognition and acknowledgements, musical performance, Maples Drumming.
Hello.
My name is Liz Myers. I'm the new music teacher at Maples Elementary School. I have taken the job of a great music teacher who retired. Her name was Kathy Prowse. And she began the Maples Arabic Drumming Ensemble. And what a privilege it is for me to continue this great tradition. And I'm very happy that our students are doing so well. I'm thankful that you allowed us to come tonight, and the students are very excited. We have a lot of performances, and the Maples Arabic Drumming does a lot of outreach in the community. We perform for many nonprofit organizations. Like this Sunday, we'll be performing at the Festival of Trees. We perform at the Relay for Life. We try to do as many outreach things that really shows our support for all the great things the rest of the community is doing. So, we're very proud. And without further ado, please welcome the Maples Arabic Drummers. This evening is a piece of music. The Alku Solo is a piece of music that the students must play in order to be a part of the ensemble. So, they have to learn it before they can get into this ensemble. And some of the students, it takes a few years before they get in. So, with a loud cry, the students are Alku Solo. Our second piece is written, it was written about a little dog named Diggity, a little dog named Diggity Diggity Dog. And you'll hear that pattern, Diggity Diggity Dog, when the students play it. It's a sweet little song and it's a great little piece. So, here is Do Diggity. Our final piece tonight is usually a crowd-pleaser. It's called Arabic Rock. And if you feel the need to clap along, you may clap along. So, thank you very much. Reepa. Make it a barker.
Great music and Maples Arabic Drumming. You make us so proud. You do a fabulous job representing our whole school district. Thank you very much. Trustee Petlicoff?
Okay, next is commendations from Fortson High School, Mr. David Tran and Latifa Shaito.
Good evening. My name is Latifa Shaito.
And my name is David Tran. On behalf of Fortson High School, we are very proud representatives. And we'd like to thank off the board, superintendent, and the community members here for having us here and letting us read the commendations. April, we'll start off.
Dearborn High School. Commendations to Dearborn High School senior Ali Hamandi, who has been named a commended student in the 2018 National Merit Scholarship Program for his outstanding score on the 2016 Preliminary SAT National Merit Scholarship Qualifying Test. Ali placed among the top 50,000 scores of more than 1.6 billion, million students who entered the 2018 competition by taking the 2016 Pre-SAT and National Merit Scholarship Qualifying Test. He has demonstrated outstanding potential for academic success. Congratulations to Dearborn High seniors, Ali Hamandi and Ali Osman, who earned the AP Scholar with Distinction Award. They received an average score of at least 3.5 on all AP exams taken and scores of three or higher on five or more exams. Commendations to the following Dearborn High seniors who earned an AP Scholar with Honor Award, which is granted to students who receive an average score of at least 3.25 on all AP exams taken and scores of three or higher on four or more exams. Ali El Tamimi, Adam Bazey, Maya Hamka, and Ryan Monthereth.
Commendations to the following outstanding Dearborn High seniors for receiving the AP Scholar Award in 2017. An AP Scholar Award is granted to the students who receive scores of three or higher on three or more AP exams. Amani El Dunan, Mohamed Al Mara, Matthew Apostol, Laura Bazey, Zain Barry, Mohamed Darwish, Aya Al Hadi, Kasim Habhab, Brandon Haystan, Leila Jawad, Mohamed Jawad Mackey, Ahmed Kasser, Benjamin Skandorff, and Quinn Whitaker.
Fortson High School. Commendations to Fortson High School football players, Libib Joma, Ahmed Seba, Hussein Ajami, who spoke to Eunice and Woodworth teams about rivalries, leaving it on the field, and the brotherhood of Fortson Football. The football players-
Good evening, by the way.
So we have here, one will be on display here at Central Office and one will be, so I can, I can hear, one will be at Becker, and you also have your plaque. And then I know we have a banner as well that we purchased, that we're going to have one at Central Office and one also at Becker Elementary. So congratulations.
That was onstage.
Really nice. That is nice. Well, Principal Hassan, do you want to say anything? Do you have a secret sauce that you can share?
Well, you're looking at the secret sauce, honestly.
Hard work?
Yes, it's the hard work and dedication of our whole Becker community, especially our teachers. And you'll see later in our presentation, we break that down for you guys. We're extremely honored, and I speak on behalf of all of our staff, this would not be possible if it wasn't for the hard work of our teachers, our parent involvement, involvement, our district initiatives, our, the support that the district gives us. We are truly grateful, and I work among a fabulous team. And they make my job a lot easier because they're just fabulous. So I really want to thank them for all the hard work that they do, and especially also our parents and, you know, our students. Our students constantly shine, and we're so proud of them. And I want to thank you for this moment. Thank you, guys. Thank you, guys, all.
Trustee Barry wants to say something.
I just want to say congratulations to the Becker community. I know Becker is the perfect model of a quote-unquote neighborhood school. I've been to Becker many, many occasions. Parents walk to the school. You're the perfect example that takes a village, the administrators, the teachers, staff, and I know you have great PTA over there. You have great parents over there. I know there are leaders here someplace, Saido Zahir. You guys do wonderful work. Becker students are blessed to have you, we're blessed for the work that you do. So thank you and congratulations.
And I know Trustee Hamud also wants to say, did you want to say something also? I think you were flagging me.
You guys are more than welcome to stay up here.
Stay here for more.
You know, for the numbers, over 90% of our students being disadvantaged. You go to Becker and there is this sense of community, and this really affirms the hard work that our teachers, our parents, if you want to see parents that are involved in the schools, you go take a look at Becker. If you want to see teachers that put everything that they have, even their families, into some of these classrooms. When I went on a SIP visit to Becker, I went into Ms. McSood's class, and I don't know if you remember Dr. Maleko, but she had her daughter there. Her daughter Elena was there, and she was actually helping her, helped the students with a science project. And every class had a story like this. You make us so proud. You do the hard work, and Rima Blue looks good on you.
Blue ribbon.
Yes. Congratulations to every single one of you. You have made this district proud. You did that. The parents, the students, they'll thank you on behalf of all of us.
So we have a video we're going to play right now, tribute to Becker. Mr. Shigfree's going to put that up. And then as mentioned, we have a presentation later in the agenda. Special report.
The foundation that Becker was built on is really about how far can we take our students. Our students know that it's not going to cut it to just give us standard. We're going to expect more rigor. We're excited to say that Becker has been awarded the Blue Ribbon due to being an exemplary school for schools across the nation. What does that mean? It means that we're now recognized at a national level for being a school who has high expectations, and that we're an exemplary school for all schools.
This is a huge national award. This is the first time in the history of Dearborn Public Schools that we've had a school recognized. Now, I want to mention that, you know, it's not only the school that's getting it, which is Becker Elementary, but it's the entire district, and it's quite an honor. There are only 13 schools this year in the state that received it, 342 nationally. So only the top schools and top school districts in the nation get recognized on a regular basis.
What do we focus on as a school? So for example, one of the things we wrote down in the application was, there's a strong focus on small group instruction. Really, we're co-teaching as when teachers are in there, but we're also pulling those kids, and we're trying to get into the kids and tap into their strengths and weaknesses and build off of that. When we're looking at what sets us apart, the focus really is, how am I prepared? How am I going to be prepared for college or career? That should be a question even elementary kids are asking themselves. Because if we get that goal in place, there's nothing that these kids can't do. It's the dedication of our staff, the involvement of our parents, and really the hard work that our students put forth. Through our partnership within, you know, the staff, the parents, the students, we understand that we want all students that come to Becker to not just give us the minimal, they need to give us more than that. And that really is a tone that we set here at Becker, and it's, it's evident throughout the school. As soon as you walk in, you get that sense of our students are working hard because they want to make sure that their teachers know how hard they're working. So all of those components set us apart from other schools.
I realized the enormity to this award. We're going to Washington DC to meet with the Secretary of Education, myself, the principal and teacher to receive this. But it wasn't about me, it wasn't necessarily just about the principals, it was about the entire community. So what better way than to have the community celebrate? So we went on this day outside in front of the school, and we had all the students there. We had our vision sign there, we had the teachers there, we had parents there, we had PTA members, we had a truck with a lift that David Musten brought in to get an overview, picture of the school. And it was just a real positive. We actually, police officers were there, were happy for us. You could see that the community and the celebration of, look, we're making a difference for students on a daily basis, and that's what our vision stands for, you know, students first. Inspire, educate, celebrate.
There's an ability for our students to apply themselves and apply their own thoughts and, and provide their input. So we tap into the individual student, and now kids are looking it up. The teachers are working together on like a writing project. What does it mean to be a Blue Ribbon school? How can I always be a Blue Ribbon student? We're trying to take that status and have them apply it to themselves. We tend to, you know, thrive off challenges. We're able to produce great things with them because we've invested in them. We've committed ourselves to them because he can or she can. So we give them that confidence that they can do anything, and this is why Becker is so unique.
So you find out that Dr. Maleko is not only a hockey player, but a cheerleader.
I know at the football sections, they, the students know that, so during our football games. I also just, we say students first, but you know, again, it was the support of the teachers, the community, the support staff, everyone that puts students first for this recognition. So congratulate the entire Becker community, the parents, the students, everyone. Thank you.
You do make us very proud. Thank you, Dr. Bolig, for coming from Grand Rapids. I know, I know that drive very well. It's like five hours round trip. So thank you for, for caring enough to come.
Thank you.
You know, I want, I missed in commendations, I noticed two things in our board notes that I wanted to comment on. Becker School is changing lives, but literally Dearborn Schools saves lives. We had two teachers recently, one a Fortson coach, I believe a teacher also, and the other one was at Edsel, a teacher at Edsel that intervened with students who were having health conditions and literally saved their life by either, I think, chest compressions and medication. So I just, I can't say how proud I am of Dearborn Schools, so I'll get teary, just like Pam Adams used to. You do great work every day, and your students and your families really appreciate it. So thank you, from my part at least. So.
I just have one question. Is the principal old enough to be a principal?
Looks like she's doing the job.
They kept me busy in Washington. We were all over. She walks very fast, too.
Okay. Next item? Acknowledgement of donations.
I'm going to have Dr. Musalem come up.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening, President Lane, four trustees, Dr. Maleko. Donations, first donation, a donation of $2,259 has been offered to Miller Elementary School by the Dearborn Education Foundation to be used for Change Words, Change Your Mindset. A donation of $230 has been offered to Henry Ford Elementary School by the Dearborn Education Foundation to be used for educational videos. A donation of $3,066.50 has been offered to Miller Elementary School by the Dearborn Education Foundation to be used for anti-bullying school-wide kickoff. A donation of $1,631 has been offered to Stout Middle School by the Dearborn Education Foundation for guitar lessons, guitar classes, I apologize. A donation of $1,815 has been offered to Maples Elementary School by the Dearborn Education Foundation to be used for the citywide art show. A donation of $600 has been offered to McDonald Elementary School by the Dearborn Education Foundation to be used for hokie stools. A donation of $584 has been offered to Long Elementary School by the Dearborn Education Foundation to be used for level literacy intervention. A donation of six cases of apples has been offered to Cotter School by Hussein Barry to be used for students during the Fall Festival. A donation of $181.58 has been offered to Stout Middle School by Lowes to be used for whiteboards that will be used for science teachers at Stout. And a donation of $500 has been offered to Salina Intermediate School by Mr. Alex Shasko to be used for instrumental music in the instrumental music department. Thank you.